Good evening, everybody. It is a true pleasure to have Troop 73, 73, with us here this evening. And I'd like to invite scouts to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Right there, guys. Yep.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The mission of the White Plains Public Schools is to educate and inspire all students while nurturing their dreams so they learn continually, think critically, pursue their aspirations, and contribute to a diverse and dynamic world. And before we go further, thank you all so much for being here and for leading us in the pledge. Do you want to say anything?
I do. Well, and again, so important that you are here this evening because getting to see how the Board of Education works, what the responsibilities of the Board members are. I know this is part of a process that you're involved in right now, but you guys are leaders. And one day, you might decide that you want to run for Board of Education and you want to help guide the schools. So this is a great step in the right direction and want to make sure that you know you're welcome anytime you want to come and spend an evening with us.
Look at those smiles.
They're like, great, Dr. Rick.
Yeah. We like this visit just fine.
I have to tell you, when I was a kid, I did decide that I wanted to be on the Board of Education someday. My friend's father was a member of the Board of Education, and it was something I aspired to.
That's awesome.
Before I forget, I'm going to embarrass Dr. Eller and congratulate, Ms. Eller, and congratulate her on being a really proud mom. Her son graduated medical school this past weekend.
Thank you, thank you, thank you.
That's great.
Thank you, everyone. And that's Dr. Rick.
Yes, I'd like to ask all of you to join me in a moment of silent reflection as we remember Marcia Cohen, Collins R. Reading Teacher at Highlands and White Plains High School from 1977 to 2005, and Olga Olivet, elementary teacher at Memoretic Avenue School and George Washington Elementary School until 1992. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we're going to move into our public hearing on the 2022-2023 Proposed Adopted Budget.
Just a couple of remarks. I'm talking to anybody who will listen to me about the budget and the bond and the Board of Education election, all of which are taking place next Tuesday. It's interesting, in New York, you adopt the budget before you have the hearing. But in White Plains, we've been talking about this budget and the budget process all year long, so it's no surprise as to anybody. I will note that there are some budget and bond literature, some literature on the table. And, boys, those would be good for you for following up if you have to do a report on tonight's meeting or anything. But I do want to draw your attention to, this is still a draft. You're going to get the beautiful one that's going to come in the mail all glossy and correct. This one has a mistake in one of the dates, but everything else, all the numbers are correct. And the most important number that's correct is zero, no tax increase. As you may recall, the Board of Education has been, and the district has been committed to a conservative fiscal outlook. We've been actively lobbying and advocating for more of White Plains dollars to return to White Plains to support our children and then thereby also reduce the burden on our taxpayers. Fortunately, Foundation Aid was fully funded last year, thanks to the advocacy of so many throughout the state, but also the leadership of our elected officials and our Board of Education members. And we were able to come through this year with bringing forward an extraordinary budget, supports all of our children's programming, and expands programming and opportunities, new classes, new opportunities for our kids, new sports teams, the addition of additional PPS staff to support our kids' social and emotional growth and well-being. So a lot of really amazing things with no additional cost to the taxpayer. Won't be able to do that every year, but we are really proud of this budget and bringing this budget forward. Also, we have our bond, the first phase of our bond is part of this election as well. This bond is going to revitalize the school district and take us into the next century, you know, the next part of the century. The bond utilizes debt that's falling off from previous building projects and also does not increase taxes. So two bits of really, really great news to share with our community, which we're really proud. We also have a capital reserve as an item on the ballot, and of course, this has no tax impact. This is a reserve that's used to fund capital projects so that the district doesn't have to bond for them, which also saves taxpayer dollars. So a really strong, a really strong ballot this year, you know, three questions, the budget, the bond, the capital reserve, and then, of course, our Board of Education members who are running. And I'm happy to announce that our two incumbents are running, Vice President Norris and Trustee Brady. And so we are strongly encouraging everybody to come out and vote on Tuesday. Everybody in the White Plains community should participate in this process. Boys, as you're thinking about civic opportunity and civic responsibility, voting is one of the most important things that we can all do as members of a representative democracy. And Tuesday is that day, 12:00 p.m. to 9:00 p.m. You can find your polling place, your district. If you don't know, you can go to the district website and plug in your address, and it'll tell you where you vote. And we really would love to see everybody participating in that process on Tuesday. But I need to also offer thanks, thanks to the community, thanks to the many, many hours that folks have devoted to assisting us in terms of long-range planning, our financial planning, our strategic planning. Thanks to the Finance Committee and Dr. Vicaro Taisian and her team in the business office. And of course, most importantly, thanks to the Board of Education for your leadership and also your support as we navigate some really interesting times, but came out in a very, very positive place. Thanks, Madam President.
Thank you. Just some brief announcements at this time by the Board. I would say that all of us gathered a couple of weeks ago to honor our acting district clerk, celebrating her retirement. The Friends just gave a wonderful and just warm affair in honor of our board clerk, Michelle Schoenfeld. And as you know, the Friends of White Plains, they do raise funds to support, you know, the arts in our schools, and they're very connected to our schools and at the ready, you know, to help in any way they can to just fund special events and activities to make sure that all of our kids are able to participate. And that is in line with our district work on equity. All kids participate in everything that they choose to. So we are thankful to have been there in honor of Michelle. We are thankful for her work with the Friends. And thank you, Michelle, again, for all you have done and are continuing to do for us.
And a clear, a clear highlight of that evening was Michelle's grandson singing "One Love and Imagine." It was, he brought the house down. It was, it was really amazing. So it was.
I'll mention a few things.
One thing, one thing before you go. I, Dr. Rick, just reminded me. I missed an opportunity to, since we were having a public hearing, that we ask for any questions from anyone in the audience on our budget.
Scouts? No pressure.
And this is not the public participation portion in case, if, I'm so sorry. This is, yeah, these are questions related to the budget. Sure.
Hi. So I'm reading the law school quick about the bond. I just was wondering, seems like all schools already have air patients writing that, so Highlands is not?
Highlands is.
Okay, it just wasn't.
It's that part, it's part, yeah, it's part of a different pot of money.
Okay.
Yep. You're welcome. Thanks for that question. All of the schools, every building, every classroom, all throughout the school district will have HVAC. So as you're thinking about the future, yes. Michelle, before you, just one thing before you go.
Wait, wait. Any, yeah, any other questions? So really, I should close the public hearing and, right, and have moved on. So if there are no other questions, we will close that part of our meeting and go into our announcements.
So John, John, when will this be aired?
Probably Wednesday.
Oh, okay. That's awesome. So this coming weekend, White Plains High School, the Laux Games, the Glendy Laux Games, named after a beloved, he was a coach, he was a teacher. This will be the 54th annual. It is the nation's largest or second-largest invitational track meet every year. Little hint, if you want to show up on Saturday afternoon, there will be a young woman running from Canada and a young woman running from, I can't remember, but they ran the fifth and sixth fastest high school female miles in history.
Wow.
So this will be the race to come watch. But to let you know, it'll be the second-largest Laux Games in history. There will be 221 schools attending, a total of 321 teams with 3,509 athletes. So it'll be Thursday afternoon, Friday afternoon, and then all day Saturday. And the weather's supposed to be good, and it is a tremendous, you will watch future stars, future Olympians, people who have worked hard all their lives to get to Laux. So it's something that the community should be proud of, and I hope to see you there.
And Charlie, after they go to Laux, Saturday over at Eastview, is the Reading Opens the World Family Literacy Fair, which is going to be awesome from 10 to 3. So you get some sports, you get some literacy, and you head over to Eastview. This is so many community partners, though, this year that I don't remember seeing this many partners. So we have the library, White Plains Youth Bureau, the PTA, NICEIT, First Book. There's just so many people, CSEA, White Plains Teachers Association, so many people are involved in this book fair. And they're going with a theme, and they're giving away a large number of books.
Forty thousand.
Forty thousand. That's a large number of books, yeah. Absolutely. And I just wanted to mention that, as well as attending the National Junior Honor Society induction over at Highlands a few weeks ago. It was a beautiful ceremony. They had a guest speaker, a retiring librarian, Ms. Chaflo. She gave a really great speech, and I think it was 153 or 154 kids were inducted into the National Junior Honor Society at Highlands. So that was really impressive, given the year and a half that, well, no, sixth grade, they entered middle school during the pandemic. So pretty, pretty amazing feat for all those kids. So congratulations to them.
Anybody you know?
Yeah, there were a few.
Yeah, Kane, yeah, Kane, just to underline that, that book fair, that is huge. I did sit in on a couple of, or at least one planning meeting on that. It is a huge effort amongst the partners that you mentioned, so I really want to try to get over there, too. And they were working on Saturday as well, organizing. And if you remember, during the, I guess, the first year of the pandemic, we also handed out those books, and it is a tremendous asset for our students. So wonderful, wonderful. Thanks for bringing that up.
So I just wanted to mention, the next night after the National Junior Honor Society was National Honor Society induction at the high school as well, and a number of Board members were there as well as at both ceremonies. So again, congratulations to all those students, their families, the teachers, the administration, the staff that provided all the support to our students to get them to where they are. I want to thank the Special Education Committee of the PTA Council for its presentation on Making Friends and Forging Friendship. That committee, the Special Education Committee, is dear to my heart. It was established as part of PTA Council, actually, the year that I was president. So they do great work. I went to the Post Road Spring Fest, which was really fun. I dropped in, there were kids and families outside, in the gym, in the cafeteria, and auction, so lots of great things were happening there as well. And I attended the PTA Council meeting, and all the PTAs were together to hear the budget presentation, and the PTAs all are supporting the district budget. So thank you.
Thank you, thank you. Any, any other comments? Thank you. Thank you, everyone. You, you'll report?
Yeah. Happy Mother's Day to everybody. Hope you had a great day yesterday. Certainly better weather than we saw on.
Friday, sir.
Yeah, exactly. Also want to recognize and thank our amazing nurses here in the White Plains City School District. It's Nurse Recognition Week. Forty thousand books Saturday, guest readers. It's going to be a great time, a lot of fun. And, you know, for moms and dads, guardians, kids, this is a great opportunity to build those home libraries. And it's first come, first served. You can get as many books as you want, and there are all kinds of books. Picture books for toddlers to chapter books for young adult readers. So come, they're all brand new. It's a really amazing opportunity, so please take advantage of that. Starts at 10 o'clock over at Eastview. You can hit that, then go to Laux, or go to Laux, and then hit that, whichever you like, but make sure you do them both. Laux is going to be a great day as well, and.
Ceremony's at noon, right?
Ceremony's at noon. Yep.
On Saturday.
So the, yeah, the 5K road race that I'll be driving the pace car, and Mr. Letizzi will be riding right, Dr. Letizzi will be riding right behind me, running right behind me. He'll be running in the race. I can't.
Kane is running?
Kane is running.
Awesome.
All right.
We, we absolutely have to, and I'm so glad you're here, because we absolutely have to thank Mrs. Roma Buck and the entire PTA for the extraordinary efforts that you have all, all of the members of the White Plains City School District, PTA, the support that you've given our kids in our school district, especially over the last two and a half years. It's been an amazing partnership. You guys have been at the table for every critical decision, part of the planning process, part of the reopening process, and now, as we're coming, you know, full circle almost, getting back to, in fact, we were just talking today about end-of-the-year activities and culminating activities, and it's really great. But I do want to thank you again for everything and all of your support. Really appreciate it.
And she says, no problem, and makes it look easy, but really, thank you.
She does. Oh, absolutely. COVID-19 is still with us, still with us. We, you know, we still have identified cases, and we still are continuing to urge folks to self-monitor your own symptoms, your loved one's symptoms, and stay home if you're not feeling well. Tough time of year, allergies, so we've got sniffleys, coughs, you know, sneezes, but discerning those symptoms from illness can be done through testing. And remember, the school district still offers weekly PCR testing. We still offer access to rapid tests at any time. So for anybody within the school district who is interested in participating in testing, that is available to you at all times. And again, we want everyone's, we want everyone healthy and safe, so if you're not feeling well, make sure you stay at home, and also make sure you're taking care of yourself and following all of the good steps that we all know that we should do to stay healthy, especially not putting our hands in our mouths. That's, that's most important. Our COVID numbers are still being reported. We're still reporting them to the community. We did see, you know, a slight uptick today, you know, last couple of days, but again, you know, we anticipate that, and we have been talking about that, and we'll continue to keep an eye on and keep our community informed. Advocacy is ongoing, school lunch. We're continuing to advocate for school lunch to be funded at all levels for all children all throughout the country. We are also continuing to advocate for pre-K, and I know we're going to talk about that a little bit in a couple of minutes, as well as the looming professional shortages for teachers, which may not be being felt right now in the state of New York, but it will be, and it's certainly being felt all throughout the country, and, you know, teachers, support staff members, administrators. It's a problem. I did mention already the budget bond, Board of Election, Board, Board election on Tuesday. We have a Facebook Live this Thursday at 12:00. So if you have questions about the budget or anything else, you can ask anytime, and I'll go through all of those things again on Thursday. Remember, Memorial Day weekend, even though it's a couple of weeks away, has been extended because we had snow days or emergency weather days that were available, so you had a little bit of a longer vacation weekend this year. And end-of-the-year activities are in the works, they're being planned, and will be communicated from all of our schools to our families. And that concludes my report. Madam President.
Thank you, Dr. Rick. Next, we'll move on to the portion of our, our meeting for public participation. The public will entertain comments from the public on any issue with a time limit of three minutes per person and a maximum time limit of 25 minutes. We ask that you respect the privacy of any staff or individual, and matters of a more personal nature can be discussed directly with the administration. When you make your statement, please step up to the podium and state your name and address and, and address us with your comments with a time limit of three minutes. Any public participation? Thank you. Please come up.
Thanks for coming.
Yes, thanks for coming. You can stand right up here so we can all hear you.
Thank you.
You can just give it to the clerk.
Do you want to start?
Yeah, you can.
Yeah.
I'll be, I'll be.
I was going to say that key.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Hi. I don't know if this is on, but my name's Alan Weintraub, 11 Old Farm Circle, White Plains, New York, White Plains High School, class of 61. The topic here, my interest was perked during the last school board election when League of Women Voters held a Zoom meeting, and one of the questions was, what is the status of pre-K in the White Plains School District? That was the question. I can't remember. The response was, I'm paraphrasing, it's too expensive, we can't afford it. And that's an interesting comment, and I respect that, but it was an opinion without a fact, and that always bothers me, just intellectually. So having said that, I'm going to read the oral presentation. I appeared before the Board at the January 10, 2022 meeting, and subsequently, I'm just going to read this to keep within the three minutes and to reflect about what has happened in that interim from my point of view. Dr. Richter and members of the Board of Education, thank you for the opportunity to address you again regarding my presentation to discuss providing funding for a full day of pre-K for all four-year-olds in the district commencing September 2022. The presentation is a follow-up to my initial presentation made before you on this objective on January 10, 2022. After this initial presentation, I had the opportunity to discuss this objective by Zoom and emails with Dr. Debbie Han and Jennifer Hammond King from the district. I would like to thank them for their insistence in understanding the facts and obstacles which has prevented the district from providing full-day pre-K for all the four-year-olds. Last week, Dr. Richter and I had a phone call to review the status of reaching this objective, an objective which I know we are all are on the same page, the necessity to provide full-day pre-K for all four-year-olds, and then hopefully for all three-year-olds. Based on the information provided, right now, the district is prepared to fund all-day pre-K for 349 of the 504-year-olds estimated to enroll in September 2022. This 349 figure is 68 more than the 281 four-year-olds enrolled this current year. Unfortunately, since my initial presentation in January, the U.S. Senate failed to enact the Biden Build Back Better bill to provide pre-K funding, and New York State failed to fund pre-K throughout the state at the same level as provided to pre-K for all three and four-year-olds in New York City. The outstanding question, therefore, is how the Board can fund the additional money to provide pre-K for the 151 four-year-olds by September 2022. And I know that's probably not possible, but this is part of a discussion. Really, it's trying to understand the facts and the problems. And now we get into, I didn't do too well in math. I have calculated this additional money to be $4.5 million based on a cost of $30,000 per student. Based on the real estate taxable valuation available to me, and I am by far not an expert, I have calculated that this additional $4.5 million can be collected by increasing the school real estate property tax at a rate to collect an annual increase of $210 from a residential house with a median asset value of $13,000. And to be candid about it, this is my pencil scratching, which I take, I'm going to assure you, I would not go to the bank with this, but I trust the Board has the ability to calculate this figure to the penny. Of course, my figures may be incorrect as to both the amounts needed to fund the pre-K for all four-year-olds and the necessary real estate property tax increase. I respectfully request the Board provide its calculation of both these figures to fund the pre-K full day for the 151 four-year-olds for September 2022. I understand the Board has retained a consultant to produce a report later this year, which may include changes that would possibly assist the district in providing such pre-K schooling. Unfortunately, the report will not help the 151 four-year-olds who will not be able to attend pre-K this September. I look forward to receiving this information about the cost and funding opportunities, as well as the consultant's reports, to continue advocating to provide for pre-K schooling for all the four-year-olds and then the three-year-olds. Such pre-K education will certainly benefit the children, their families, but just as significantly, will have beneficial impacts on all the residents and on the city of White Plains at many levels, which should also be discussed and publicized. Thank you.
Thank you.
I trust, as was done in the past, I will have some further conversation with Dr. Richter and his staff. I hope so. And I hope you understand the spirit of which I've been gathering this information and putting it together. Thank you.
Yes, yes. Thank you very much for coming and presenting.
I just, I just want to thank, thank you again, Weintraub. It is so heartening to have a conversation with somebody who is supremely focused on early childhood education. Early childhood education is the, is the beginning of everything. And really, it's a, in my estimation, it's a travesty, number one, that we're not feeding all of our children all across the country every day, breakfast and lunch, but also that we actually are having to try to figure out how to provide every four-year-old in the United States of America with a solid early childhood educational experience. You know, when we talk about equity in our school district, we believe it's interwoven into all of our decisions, and that means access for every child, regardless of their individual circumstances or unique challenges that may exist. And. And so we are going to continue to, and, and of course, we'll follow up, but we're going to continue to advocate because we believe it is a responsibility of the state to, to fund pre-K statewide, that there shouldn't be winners and losers depending upon your zip code, and that every child should, should have that head start opportunity. So we need to continue to, and, and you and I have talked, and, you know, we have, we have a great delegation here in, in our district of, of very strong advocates, and Assemblywoman Pollan, as you know, was, was advocating very, very hard along with her, her colleagues, and we're appreciative of that, and we need to do more. And, and she'll, she'll be the first to tell you, you know, that again, we're going to, we're going to come back to this next year. I do want to just make mention, we're not sure yet, and there very might be 151, it could be 153. We're not sure yet what, what the numbers are going to look like for next year's cohort of pre-K students. One of the things that we were talking about, we being, Dr. Hand and, and Simon King and I last week, we, we might actually not have a waiting list next year, which would be wonderful. But it's only, it, it, it's not a, doesn't fix the problem, you know, because what we need to see is, we need to see all children have an access. So thank you, and we'll follow up.
The great irony of all of this, I, I trust you're aware that Senator Manchin, who's probably one of the senators responsible for us even having this discussion, I, I trust you're aware that in West Virginia, there's pre-K for all three, three and four-year-olds.
Yeah. That's interesting.
And I'm not, I have no idea, but that goes to, not only here, but to our governor, legislature, but in West Virginia, there's pre-K for all three-year-olds.
Thank you.
Thank you so much for your passion. We appreciate it.
Can I just, I, I saw Council President Justin Brash walk in. Council President, nice to see you. Thanks for being here.
Yes, yes, welcome. Okay, so now we'll move on to our, any other public participation? Our scouts are okay? Any more, any public participation? Any questions you want to ask us? Okay. I know, I know, but I think this is the perfect time because this is the perfect, the part where, you know, the public is invited to, to, to address us and ask questions, and so I just wanted to make sure that you guys are okay. Okay.
Is this, is this on website? This is the first time I've seen it, sorry.
Yeah, it's hot off the press. Yeah, I'm going to share it with everybody.
Thank you. Any, any other questions? Okay. Next, we'll move on to our summary action items. We have summary actions four through eight. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. I'd like to draw your attention to our donations this evening. We are grateful for the following donations. $12,200 from the Friends of the White Plains Public Schools for four grants. Thank you so much to the Friends. $200 for each school from the Beautification Foundation for Outdoor Gardening Projects. $500 from Deanne Consalves, and $50 from Robin Kestronova for the Brown Family Memorial Scholarship. $500 from Diane Maudslay for the Frederick J. Maudslay Grit Scholarship. $500 from Mr. and Mrs. James Baker for the Frank A. Schmidt Memorial Music Award. $500 from Lawrence Gianola for the Chris Gianola Science Scholarship. $200 from Jerry, Jerry Rice, Vakins, and $25 from Deborah Ann Mumford for the Lois Van Eppes Scholarship. Thank you all.
Thank you. Are there any questions? All in favor? Aye. Next, we're going to move on to our individual, our individual action items. For the first one, we have the recommended approval of the temporary appointment of Michael Eaton, acting principal, acting principal for Highlands effective March 25th, 2022 through June 30th, 2022, replacing Mr. Spatterfor. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Are there any questions? All in favor? Aye.
I abstain, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Next, we'll move on to our second individual action item, which is the recommended approval of the temporary appointment of Tara Daly, interim assistant principal for Highlands, effective April 18th, 2022 through June 30th, 2022, replacing Mr. Eaton.
So moved.
Okay. All in favor? Aye.
And I abstain again, Madam Chair. Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, yeah, you know, I, I will make mention, I just, you know, as, as many know, sometimes Mr. Spatterfor needs to be out to, to take care of some personal issues, and, and Mr. Eaton and Ms. Daly have, have stepped up and stepped in, and they've been, they've been doing that throughout the course of the year, which is really fantastic, and, and I think it's demonstrative of the type of team that we have at Highlands that's, that's ready to support each other and fill in, so thanks to, to them certainly. Also, I, I should make mention that Ms. Daly has a tremendous student teacher with her this year who was then able to step in for her during her time when she was filling in for Mr. Eaton. So just thanks to everybody for, for helping out, and, and we really appreciate it.
Yes. Thank you, Dr. Richter. For our next individual action, we have the recommended approval of the appointment of Judson Seibert, Esquire of Keenan Dean, as tax suciary attorney for the 2022 through 2023 school year. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Are there any questions?
No, we had an opportunity to meet Mr. Seibert last week, and we're very fortunate to have, I think, the opportunity for him to, to work with us for the tax suciary cases, and we're certainly going to miss our former counsel as well, so.
Yes.
Mark Sharp.
Mark Sharp. And was once a board member many years before then.
Yes.
Still be around.
Certainly.
Lives around the corner from us.
And is a friend of the White Plains School.
That's right.
Right. He, he really serves the district tremendously well.
Yes, he did.
For at least a decade, probably decades.
More, more.
And, you know, so.
He's earned it.
It's sad that, yeah, he gets to retire, exactly, and I think we're going to, I think we're going to do all right with Keenan Bean and, and Judge Seibert.
Thank you for mentioning that. I, I, you know, Mark's been around, I guess, forever for our tenure on the board, and, and we, we hope he enjoys his retirement, but we know he'll still be active.
And negotiated so well for us.
Yes, absolutely, and had the little meetings to explain everything with us, so, yeah, yeah, so. All in favor? Aye. Next, we have the recommended approval of policy and regulations for homeless children. That's policy 5151. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Okay, thank you. Next, we'll go on to board discussion. We do have a policy for first reading, and it's a policy on parent involvement, and I believe, Kane, is this is the one you?
No. No.
Okay.
But this one is, I actually was going to comment on this one anyway, because it does have the, a great section in this policy about parent responsibilities in terms of what the parents are responsible for, in terms of attendance, making sure homework is completed, volunteering, so this is a, one of those policies that I think is worthy of some people's time to check out.
Yeah.
And, Madam President, the, the policy related to curriculum and instruction, we're going to, we're going to look at that next week.
Okay, okay, okay. Yeah, this, this, I do think this is interesting as well, and this is our first reading, so it'll be, you know, we can question before adoption.
It's been reviewed by the policy committee before the first reading.
Yes, yes.
So if people wanted to read it, they could go on the district website through Board Docs, and this document, this found as an attachment on our agenda.
Yes, sir.
Next, we will have board committee reports. I think for finance, we're just coming down right now to the work of this school year that will start up in September or October again.
It continues nonstop, actually.
So.
And we had the Health and Safety Committee meeting, that's our quarterly meeting, and we discussed the, our district-wide safety plan, some things we can say here, some we cannot. We talked about our locks that we have, our new camera systems, we talked about our fire safety, our drills that we have, what we'll do in terms of safety for the locks meet and safety in, and masking, and anything we talk about in terms of our two graduations coming up and all of our moving up days. And Dr. Mr. Stefanelli went over all the updated plans and building plans that are going on.
I'll mention curriculum and instruction. So we reviewed some of the challenges related to the high school schedule using a lens having to do with instruction, class size, and safety, and the integration of the freshman seminar. And then we also looked at a recommendation for the core resource for the elementary science curriculum, and I had been serving on that committee as well, and so Science 21 is the recommended resource. And I just want to mention what a thoughtful group of teachers and representative group of teachers that were involved in making this decision. There was really a comprehensive look at the resources that were available and that are aligned with the New York State Science Learning Standards, and our students are going to be tested on those new standards in a couple of years. So there's going to be a thoughtful phase in also of the new curriculum and the new resource, starting with third and fourth graders, so that the fourth graders basically will have two years using the new resource before they have to actually take the, the new New York State version of the test. But I really did feel that the, the committees were, were well done. Kathy Barpulis really shared very ably and guided the committee through a very thoughtful process.
Thank, thank you. Special.
Yes, we had special ed. We met at the high school. You know, we, we talk, for those here tonight or watching, the word equity unfortunately has become a hot-button word in some places. What equity means is being able to deliver where each kid is, to meet each kid where they are. So it's not about taking anything away from quote-unquote "high flyers." It's not about doing anything other than how do we support and service all of our kids and their families? That's what equity is. If you hear a different definition of, of equity, disregard it.
It's wrong.
It's wrong. That's not what we're doing here. We're hoping to meet every kid's needs. So in this very amazing program in the high school, which we brought over from Rochambeau, and now we've got kids who are getting support, kids who are maybe a little emotionally sensitive, emotionally insecure, and have other similar needs, there is a room where they can go to get educational support with wonderful teachers, and then there's an adjoining room where they can hang out and get emotional support. So we spent, Cheryl was there, and, and it was just an amazing visit to watch what these teachers are doing and these psychologists and social workers. So we're being able to support these kids who at one time weren't in a place where they could be mainstreamed and have access to all that the high school has, and that's the key, because some of these kids, in fact, they're going off to college. And can we provide them with the skills necessary so that they can, that we can enable them to go and be successful in college while here at the same time taking courses, maybe taking honors courses, AP courses, whatever's available, that they can, we can unlock their potential? So it was Deb Walgarten and her folks, Susan LaQuint, and the whole team over there, Kyle, who's married to someone who graduated from the high school in 2006, but that's besides the point.
It's called the ISP program, Integrated Student Program.
Right. It was just, ISP, Integrated Support Program. Thank you, because that is another piece of equity, and, and, and how can we deliver this to all of our kids and help unlock the potential to all of our kids? That's all it is.
Thank you. Well said. Any, anything else to? Okay. An HR man, but we can't discuss.
I'm so sorry. I just wanted to, I just wanted to add, while Dr. Hand couldn't be with us this evening, she's with family, but she also shared her thanks to Kathy and, and the committee for all the science work. It's a lot of effort that goes in there, so I just wanted to share Debbie's thanks to them.
Yeah, yeah. So before we adjourn, just, you know, thank you, everyone, for being here. We have our staff, our assistant supes, you know, our parents, our, our students, you know, our, our council, you know, council president, we've had public participation. You know, your opinions are valued, your presence is, is warming and, and really just reconfirming to us about the great place that we live in, and I, I speak for every single one of us. I feel like this is my life work to be on the board, and when you show up and you, you talk to us, you let us know what you're thinking, what you're feeling, it means a lot. And when we see our students here, it's doubly important that you just become involved early, and we see you grow into this process. You already emulate, you know, our, our, our school motto and, and all the things that we want of our students, and we thank you for that. So, thank you, thank you, John Misabitz and, and John Shepherd, thank the budget, heavy lift, thank you, we had a tour, that is great, we're hiring people, you know, it's all hard work, right? So, you know, it's all appreciated. So without further ado, may I have a motion to adjourn into exec session?
So moved.
To discuss matters of a personal nature? Any questions? All in favor? Aye. All right. Thank you, everyone. Be safe. Thank you.